Good morning to the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees Meeting of October 14th, 2014. I'd like to ask, call on Paul, Patrick McCartney, to lead us in the pleasure of allegiance.
If it was Paul, I wouldn't be here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
That's the secretary for a roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydenthal.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flender.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Okay, does everyone have the amendment to the agenda? The amendment is under number 10, some replacement language in section B, and also a correction to C3. There's also a correction to 10, number 7. The last sentence should read, "Equipment to be installed, 1/27/2015," instead of 2014. Ask approval for minutes.
No move.
I'm sorry, for the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda as amended?
Been moved in a second. Approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ask approval of the minutes of the September 9th meeting?
No move.
Second.
Moved in a second. We approve the minutes of the September meeting with some corrections.
Yeah, just real quickly, and I don't know the answer to this, but on, under miscellaneous, there needs to be a correction on the time of our executive session. And I don't know what the correct time is, but it says we went into executive session at 9:39, and we came out at 10:29, and we came out, and that was for an additional five minutes, and then we came out to find at 9:52, so I don't know what the exact timing should be on that, but...
I think it was...
Was it 10:52? It's the last number, 9:39, we came back out at 10:29, went back in, and then we came back out at 10:52?
I believe that would be correct.
Is that correct? Okay, then I'll make a motion, I'll move the minutes to indicate that we came back out of executive session at 10:52.
Okay. Ask for a motion to, I'm sorry, motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in a second to accept the minutes as corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, audience to patrons, patrons and petitioners, Mary Ann?
Yes, I had noticed, I was looking at TV, and on the national sports, Hopson was named, and I also had, when I went to church Sunday, picked up a Kansas City Globe where the Royals had their suite, and a young man named Fielder, the center fielder's name is Lorenzo Kane, and I don't know how many people knew it, but that Hopson's been an asset to this school for probably 30 years, and that he has did a lot with Royals players, but this outstanding young man mentioned his name on the national sports, and I just didn't know how many of you all were aware of it, that we have a nationally known person among us in the track area who taught this guy how to run. And I have the paper.
Mr. Hopson, would you please stand? Do you have anything to say this morning? Come to the microphone. Would you come to the microphone?
Come, come to the...
Yeah.
It was funny when I called, I said, I tried to ask Dr. Gibbons, she didn't return my call, so I said, well, I tell you what, you show up at the meeting, I'll do it myself.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here. Kansas City Kansas Community College have been doing a lot of these things for years. This is not the first time that we've gotten recognition. Baseball, Coach Burleson, he has a couple of guys that did real well in the pro also. I'm known in the track and field world, and last time I coached baseball, it was in the 60s, I was assistant coach for Mary Ann Flunder's husband back then, but since then, I've been into track and field. We've had a lot of success. Of course, you guys know our coach Maurice Green, Justin Gatlin, Mona Lee, Derek Thomas, Derek Johnson over there at the Chiefs right now, of course Lorenzo Kane, so we've been doing it for a long time. I don't intend to do this for me, you know, and I'm very awkward when I have to speak because, you know, when I watch TV and I see guys that's done things for their community or for their, you know, their people, I would say that they're a little bit arrogant. I like to fly below the radar. I had a couple of times that they wanted me to go on TV and all that. I really don't like doing it because I don't want the credit, I guess I could get the credit, but I don't want the publicity because I think it's, the recognition should go to the person. This morning, TV Five called me this morning, so I guess they're supposed to do a thing on us out on the track at 11 o'clock. So in saying that, that I appreciate all you guys, and hopefully we can continue to represent the community.
We'd like to thank you for your, for your work, and we all did hear your name called on national TV.
Yep.
When Lorenzo Kane beat out that infield hit, so you've done a remarkable job with him. Thank you very much.
The most important thing, the KCK was mentioned, you know, and it was mentioned a couple of times.
Right.
That's, that's the part I was impressed with, not so much me, you know, so thank you very much, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else we wish to speak to the board this morning? All right, moving along, communications.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, you want to do this first? Okay. Okay, we have a presentation. Is Dr. Kramer here? She come up, please.
I present $100,000 from the Kaufman Foundation for your Saturday Academy.
I would just like to call Marcia Palmeroy up here for just a second, because Marcia's the reason that, that we've been able to keep the Saturday Academy at such a high level here at our college. And I'd like her to just take one second or two to tell you, well, a couple of minutes probably, but to tell you a little bit about the Saturday Academy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a privilege and an honor to be a founder, along with Dr. Ed, Dr. Jean Fite from our school district, and Irel Porter from KU Med Center of the Saturday Academy. And we started that in 1999 with 20 students, and now we have 190 students, thanks to the Kaufman Foundation, who called on the Memorial Weekend and said, if you could add about 40 more students to Saturday Academy, we'd double the money that we gave you last year. And of course, we said yes, and we created a new model, and sometimes the necessity of adding more students creates a model, and I think it will be a better model. Our students, we have 245 students who are now in college, graduate school, and medical school across the United States, but I wanted to also say that most of our students, I would say over half go to college in the region and then come back and work in Wyandotte County. We have engineers, physicians, we have accountants, we have teachers, all who are part of Saturday Academy, summer programs, and our media project. And the wonderful thing is that the community college provides the location for our media project every Wednesday for three hours. The students learn to make films on Saturday Academy, the whole day is devoted, and it's here. And then we also have our programs during the summer at the college, at KU, and also at KU Med Center. So what a big part that KCK is in terms of making all this happen. So thank you for having us as a part of your family, and we do so appreciate it. Thank you.
Awesome. There you go. Anyone on the board, any board member have any questions?
Yeah, Marcia.
Nice to see you.
I'm just curious where your students come from, and how do you recruit them, and how are they selected?
Yes, the students come, about 90% of them come from Kansas City Kansas Public Schools. The others come from, we have probably about six students who come from Piper and Turner. Those students came in as a guest referrals from our, our teachers. The students who come from Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, it's open to all students from the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, but it is a pipeline, which means those students who get in early, like in 7th grade, and even some 6th graders, they'll stay with us throughout their time in high school, and even remain, they're connected to us, and I'm so glad you asked that question, because they're connected to us while they're in college and after. Right now, out of 40 teachers who are working in the Saturday Academy this year for the 190 students, a ratio of 1 to 8 students, 21 of those students came through Saturday Academy when they started in 7th grade. So we have some who are at UMK Medical School, KU Medical School, also just UMKC in terms of education. Those students are college interns, but the ones who've come back, like Juan Benwellis, started here after he came to Saturday Academy, started at the college, then he went to K-State, graduated, and he's now a civil engineer at Trans Systems in KCMO, teaching Saturday Academy every Saturday. So those are the kinds of wonderful stories that we have of our students. So KCK, and here's an exciting piece, too. Kansas City Kansas Public Schools decided last year to provide our transportation. So instead of us having to find $11,000 for buses that we've been doing for the last 15 years, they now provide the buses for Saturday Academy. And so that, again, another collaborating partner is making the difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
This is the alumni weekend that's coming up, and I think Mary Hoffman is going to tell us about it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So nice to be here again, and I thank you for giving us the opportunity to still keep everybody involved in this. This is kind of like being pregnant, if you don't mind the analogy. It's back before you knew what you could figure out what you were going to have. I can do it like this. It's, it's kind of like you know the baby's coming, and you're doing all the preparations, but you don't know what you're going to have. So that's been kind of our dilemma this year. Most of you will remember the singing group, The Carpenters. They have a really, they had a really popular song that was, started out, "We've Only Just Begun," and that's kind of the way we're looking at this alumni weekend. Around 100 years ago, elements of this school were begun, and on occasion, as we've done research for this event this weekend, we've found that they have tried to have homecoming weekends, we've had football in the past, and all that kind of thing. So we are planning on this being the first of many annual events to come. When we contacted the mayor's office to have a proclamation done for us, he entitled our weekend, "The Inaugural Alumni Weekend," and we like that word, inaugural. As somebody pointed out to me, it can't be the first annual until we've already had one or two. So it's our inaugural weekend. We have a proclamation from the mayor, and you can find it on the webpage for the Alumni Association in our very own website. So that's up and running. There is an application there for people to fill out who'd like to be involved and notified. We were asking for people to contact me because I have a phone number, and I'm here kind of to do this, among other things, help with, with the Cuba trip as well, of course, but I've had like 10 calls and two definite reservations. That's the bad news. The good news is, now when Andreek and I are out in the community visiting with people, they're approaching us when they find out we're here and from the school, and asking us about the alumni weekend. So I can imagine we may have a huge turnout. The problem is, we don't know that. We are preparing 200 packets for people. We'll take names if we have more than that, and put a few more together. I want to thank, I know Donna A. should send an email out to Unified Government People, I think Kathy did to some folks, and many others of you have been contacting people for us. So the bad news is, I don't know how many are going to be here. The good news is, we have involved just about every division on campus. We have involved, the only one I feel like we need to do more with is, where's Carolyn? Is the Leavenworth Center, and that's in the works for next time. We have so many wonderful plans for another year, and as soon as this one's over, we're going to sit down, put down what was good, bad, and ugly, and then start our plans for next year. If we have nine months to bring this thing to birth next year, we'll know what we're getting. I would like to reserve a spot on your agenda for next month, so we can give you a report about the alumni weekend. We hope to see a lot of you there. The whole schedule is printed on our website, so feel free to look at that. The mayor will be here Friday night to read the proclamation, and so luckily, we've been making good use of the activities that were already going on, and then we've been able to plan a few more extra ones. Tasha Haas is going to do a reading for us on Monday down the Intercultural Center. We have so many things going on, and we'll be showcasing the tech center on Monday, the bookstore's giving a discount, Allied Health has given you a two-week pass. We've just tried to involve everybody, and the planning has been wonderful. Campus police have just been instrumental in helping us, not only with some contacts, but also with keeping us in mind of where we need to have officers and when. So their safety, our safety, our visitor's safety is always at the foremost of their mind. I can't say enough good things about all the cooperation we've had here on campus and even in the community. So it's worth doing. We've already won because we are light years ahead of where we were before, and I wish I had partnered with Dr. Walker earlier, and I would have her sing that song for you, but I won't do that to her at the last minute. Any questions? Okay, starts Friday, registration starts Friday afternoon at 3:30 on the tennis courts. The barbecue will be on the tennis courts. We figured out we can't call it a tailgate because obvious reasons. People will think it's going to be beer and brats, and it's not. So anyway, we'll have a lot going on, and we welcome you all, and please come up and see us, and let us know your impressions when it's over. And if I don't see you before, I will see you next month. Thank you.
Mary, thank you very much. I hope everyone on campus captures your enthusiasm. It sounds like it's going to be a great event, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have an invitation for the board to attend the Wyandotte County Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on Friday, November the 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Please let Peggy know if you will attend, so that we can purchase a table. November the 7th, from 7:00 a.m., it's on a Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00, and they start at 6:45. It is at the Reardon Center. It's the 40th Annual. This is exciting news for the Commission, the Commission on Accreditation for Respiratory Care sent this letter to Mr. Parrott, and who is with our respiratory care program. "Thank you for submitting your 2014 Annual Report of Current Status and Resource Assessment Matrix. The Commission on Accreditation for Respiratory Care reviews this information to determine ongoing compliance with accreditation standards and policies and procedures. Based on the outcomes you reported, your program has met or exceeded all currently set thresholds for success on each of the required outcome measures. The Commission commends you and your colleagues for your commitment to continuous quality improvement in education, as demonstrated by your participation in programmatic accreditation." So that's our respiratory care program. And we are scheduling for the board a special Board of Trustees meeting. We cleared this with the president, and it's going to be, and I think Peggy has contacted each of you to find out the best date, and that's November 3rd, November 3rd at 4:30 p.m. in the, in the old boardroom. So thank you, it's your turn.
Okay, I have a resolution, a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41719I, whereas Kansas statutes annotated 41719C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property, except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41719, specific property which is under the control of KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is used for classroom instruction, which, I'm sorry, which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section 1, KCKCC hereby exempts for Saturday, October 18th, the banquet area of the Jewel Center from the requirement of KSA 41719C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of a dinner and a performance event called Babes in Arms, passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in a meeting held on October 14th, 2014. Ask for a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Been moved in a second, accept the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Names? None.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
There's one more announcement that I have. It will be a part of the human resource report, but I'd like to introduce the, the person that's coming on board for, she's agreed to come on for our financial, Chief Financial Officer, the interim for a period of, of two years, and that is Dr. Susan Lindahl.
Stand, Dr. Lindahl. Welcome aboard.
And like to thank Bob for the, the time that he has spent with us, and he's going to stay on to, to kind of help us do some research and some other kinds of things that have to be done. So, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to again welcome Dr. Lindahl. You know, if, if any of you know baseball, you know, it feels like we just acquired Babe Ruth, so welcome aboard. All right, moving on to the president's report. Did you tell...
Yeah.
Patrick, would you please give us a report on the gala?
Got you. Yep.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Must be the morning for firsts, because they're going to give you a report on our first ever 4.0 gala that we will be hosting on October 25th at Lake Quavira Country Club. As of today, we have about 30 seats left available for the gala, so we're selling really close to being sold out, which is our goal. The room holds 320 people, so we're excited about the opportunity to fill that room up with that. We've reached and exceeded all of our goals for the event to date. We've raised over $68,000 in sponsorship dollars, and $20,000 of that 68 has gone directly into the general scholarship fund. That was part of the top-level packages, was a portion of each sponsorship would go directly into the scholarship fund for some named scholarships for those companies, so we're excited about that. We've also exceeded our goal in just general donations we had on our reservation cards. You know, if you're not able to attend but would like to donate, we've exceeded that goal. We budgeted $2,000 for that, and we are over $2,300 in donations, and that's before the events even happen. So we look forward, I think that number will continue to grow also. Also, real excited about our live auction items. We have the Nygro Brothers, local KCK guys, coming to do our live auction for us, which is always an event in itself. And we have 10 live auction items, ranging from a dinner with Royals legend Frank White, good timing on that one. Also have two condos, one in Marco Island, Florida, and one in just south of Cancun, Mexico, for, one for a three-night stay, one for a week's stay. We have a special package Kathy Brydenthal got for us with Lydia's, includes a chef's menu dinner, and dinner, tickets to a show with the Casey Symphony on Halloween night. Have a custom-made grill being made by our Technical Education Center to auction off, and all kinds of other things, along with our live auction items. So the event so far, if we reach our budgeted goal, will net over $40,000, which is pretty good for a first-time event like this. And if you remember our discussions, when I first got here, our goal was to create an event that was a fundraising event, and made, basically was really about raising funds for scholarships, and I think we have been spot-on with this so far to date with what we're doing, and hopefully this event will continue to grow, obviously, as we build it each year. So help that we could get from you guys is filling those last 30 seats. I know most of you, I mean, all of you have already made your reservations, but if you know someone who's thinking about coming, please tell them to hurry up and get their reservations in, because we expect to be sold out here very quickly. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're 10, 11 days out, but who's counting? So Duana's still working on, Duana, I'd like to, you know, give a lot of credit to Duana. She has done a lot of hard work on the reservations and the live and silent auction, and has been a great help to me and our volunteer committee that helped us put it together. Ray and Kathy were on that, along with a lot of folks from the community business folks and community volunteers to help us put this event together. Obviously, we couldn't do it by ourselves, so appreciate any help you guys can be selling those tickets. Also, we'll always take, always some last-minute sponsorships if anybody, we're never going to turn money away, so would love to have, get that room filled and sell some more sponsorship. So anybody have any questions about the event?
Patrick, I was just going to add one other unusual item on the live auction. For those of you who are familiar with the artist Ernst Dolmert, one of our own homegrown, who is now deceased, we have an original painting that the family donated to us, so that will be kind of a, a nice addition to the, to the live auction.
Yeah, we have a lot of unique, a lot of different things, hopefully to reach all different people's tastes. We noticed it was skewing a little bit male there for a while in some of the things we were putting together, so we knew we had to go out and get some different stuff, some getaway packages for some good date nights and things like that. So we've had a lot of support from the business community in donating things, too, which is nice.
Excellent. Patrick, thanks, thanks for your report.
Thank you.
We're all excited. I do want to express on behalf of the board our deepest sympathy for the passing of your mother.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you all for your support and prayers. It was well-received, I appreciate it, and it was a, just got back, the memorial service was Friday night, so kind of a rough weekend, but thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving along, president's report. All right, moving along, President's report.
Dr. Sankey Man has a report on our climate survey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try to be as brief as possible. Purpose of this survey is to see how we feel about our jobs and, uh, KCKCC overall, and identify area of success and areas of, uh, improvement, and this is also part of the strategic planning, and it's part of the key, uh, performance indicator. And this survey was done, uh, back in April this year, and was done in online, and was open about two weeks. Response rates, uh, full-time faculty responded over fifty percent, fifty-four percent, and the full-time staff responded about forty-eight percent, although part-time, uh, staff and adjuncts, uh, responded about a little over twelve percent. So overall, was about thirty percent of our employees responded to this survey. The response, eighty percent came from main campus, and sixteen percent came from tech, and five percent came from, uh, Levmore Center. And by looking at the length of employment, um, pretty similar to back in twenty-twelve, and twenty-five percent came from ten to nine, ten years, uh, four to nine years, twenty-eight percent responded, um, twelve percent responded, people who are less than one year. And basically, I'd like to show what top-five area that, that employee said, uh, scored the highest, uh, mean scores, and the bottom fives average scores for, uh, improvement. And also comparisons were made between, uh, employee category, uh, work location, and length of employment, to see if there is any difference between those, uh, groups. These are the top-five survey questions that was scored the highest mean score. Uh, the first one is, the highest one is, are you confident that people in your unit know how to do their job well? And this is the, overall average was four-point-two. The admin, basically deans, scored the highest, four-point-eight, and, uh, four-point-two for the full-time faculty, adjuncts and full-time staff and part-time staff. So deans seems to have a lot of confidence in the people in their division. Second is the, does your immediate supervisor set an example by working hard, him or herself? Was four-point-one average score. Is your immediate supervisor willing to listen to your concerns? Also, top-three, four-point-one. And the other two is, are you satisfied with the people in your unit? Are the purposes goals of your unit clear to you? That was the five top-high score. If we look at, uh, by work location, between main campus and tech and Levmore Center, um, not much difference between the work locations, so it's, uh, the average scores are pretty similar. Same as length of employment, uh, the between those different, uh, length of employment groups, the average scores were pretty similar. But, uh, still, uh, less-than-one-year group has a standout, four-point-seven on the second questions, as your immediate supervisor set an example by working hard, him or herself. And what are the top, uh, bottom-five area for improvement? The lowest score that we scored was, would you say the college is operating better now than two years ago? Uh, the overall was two-point-five, and, uh, the scale is, one is not at all, two is a little, three somewhat, four quite a bit, five very much so. So two-point-five is, is we're improving, uh, a little, uh, between a little and somewhat. Uh, the, as an employee, how often do you take advantage of opportunity provided for staff and faculty development? That was the two-point-nine. And does your immediate supervisor see it to it? Everyone in your unit is contributing equally? That's a fairness question, that was three-point-one. Are you satisfied with the information you receive on what is going on at the college? As information sharing is about three-point-two. Are there adequate mechanisms for ironing out disagreement or conflict in your unit? That's also three-point-two. Although these are the bottom five, um, four of these survey questions scored around three, which is somewhat, so that's a positive aspect. If we look at, uh, by work location, again, there's not much difference between, uh, different places. And if we look at the length of employment, uh, one of the standout there is the first question, would you say, uh, college is operating better than, better now than two years ago? Uh, twenty-plus-years people scored lowest there, uh, two-point-one. And if you look at the fourth question there, that are you satisfied with the information you receive on what is going on at the college? The people less than one-year scored highest as four-point-one. Three important questions, most important questions that survey was, would you say the college is operating better than two years ago? Considering everything, are you satisfied with the KCKCC at the present time? Considering everything, how satisfied are you with your job? This is how we answered. Would you say the college is operating better now than two years ago? Twenty percent said, not at all. The rest is, is a positive response. Uh, seventy-three percent of the people said that, uh, either a little, somewhat, quite a bit, very much so is about four percent. Considering everything, are you satisfied with KCKCC at the present time? You can see the majority of people are satisfied with KCKCC overall, although there's eight percent people are not at all satisfied, and, uh, the rest, ninety-two percent, are a little, somewhat, quite a bit, which is highest percentage, thirty-three percent. Considering everything, how satisfied are you with your job? And three percent said, not at all, but you can see the majority of people are either quite a bit or very much so. In comparing two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and fourteen, the first question, would you say college is operating better now than two years ago? Is it slightly declining from two-point-nine and two-point-six, two-point-five, although i- it's not direct comparison between two thousand and ten and twelve, because after two thousand and ten, we changed the scale, same one-to-five scale with different wordings on it. In two thousand and ten, it was definitely no, no, neutral, yes, definitely yes. It changed to not at all, a little, somewhat, quite a bit, and very much so. So i- it's not exactly direct comparison, but it's very similar. But the rest of the two, uh, survey questions are exactly same in three different times, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and fourteen are the same scores. If we look at by different employee category, again, not much difference between different groups, overall, uh, is sa- similar, uh, mean scores. Look at by different locations, not much difference there. And interesting fact about this survey is that, at the question, would you say the college is operating better now than two years ago? The more we're here, the longer we're here, the less, uh, so we're saying that we're improving slower than we'd, we would have liked. So people under less than one-year seems to be scoring highest, and twenty-plus-years, uh, group scoring the lowest. So the more we're here, I guess we're more impatient about the progress they were making. And same pattern appears when we asked, considering everything, how satisfied are you with KCKCC at the present time? Less than one-year people are most satisfied with four-point-zero, but the rest of the groups are declining slightly. And again, uh, those three key questions, uh, if you see the, what, less-than-one-year group is a standout, for the three-point-two for the first question, four-point-zero for the second question, and four-point-three, uh, for the third question there. So respondents who've been at KCKCC less than one-year are more satisfied than the rest of the groups. These are some of the notable, uh, questions that had some standouts. Uh, the first one is that, are you familiar with the college's goals and objectives? The standout group is deans with the four-point-seven. The immediate supervisor, uh, the adjuncts seems to be the lowest mean score there. Immediate supervisor meet your unit at certain regularly scheduled time. The full-time faculty seems to be highest, uh, score. And how frequent does your immediate supervisor ask for sacrifices? Uh, adjuncts said the, the scored lowest, which can be interpreted good, and we don't ask them to sacrifice their working time and, and, and not as frequently. How frequently do, does your unit plan together? Again, admins, uh, deans and adjuncts are so, such difference in terms of, uh, average score, four-point-two for the deans, two-point-nine for the adjuncts. And is your unit able to respond successfully to unusual work demands placed upon it? Again, deans responses are standout for four-point-four, and adjuncts, three-point-three. Does your job description accurately describe the duties and responsibilities of your job? Again, the admin and full-time faculty are standouts, four-point-one, and in full-time staff and part-time staff is lower in four-point-four and three-point, uh, three-point-four and three-point-three. Um, how frequently are you working on rush jobs? And admins, a little bit of standout there, three-point-three, and adjuncts are two-point-two. How satisfied with adequacy of your workspace? And again, deans scored highest, and are you satisfied with the security at the college? And deans feel most secure, and the adjuncts next. By work location, uh, tech, people in tech responded highest average score. Are you satisfied with the adequacy of your workspace? Are you satisfied with comfortable your workspace? Are you satisfied with the security at the college? They're the highest, which is understandable with the new tech facility. By length of employment, again, it's, uh, less-than-one-year people, uh, groups are most satisfied with the highest mean score. Uh, does the Board of Trustees primarily set policies and allow administrative staff to oversee the daily operations of the college? Score is perfect, five-point-oh. These are, they were about, uh, one-hundred-and-thirteen, which forty percent of the respondent said something in comments section. And we've counted how many similar themes were mentioned, and we've counted number of times a theme is mentioned, and then, uh, theme one is about general positive comments. Thirty-seven employees made some positive comments. These are some of the excerpts that here, for example, our department has a great chemistry, and our dean is, division is one of the best, our dean is very well-organized, and our staff as well. Our dean sets an excellent example by his work ethic, I wonder who that is? Um, KCKCC is a wonderful place to work and so on. And eighteen employees commented on recent organizational change. That, this survey was done right after, uh, organizational change back in April, so a lot of, uh, employees naturally commented on it. Theme three was about communication and information sharing, which appears on every survey. Forty-two employees commented on a need for better communication and information sharing. And concerns for Technical Education Center, eight employees commented on, uh, some specific concerns about tech, mainly that, uh, they're saying that they are not part of, they don't feel that they are part of the main campus because of the work schedule. And a few employees commented on marketing and advertising. And the last theme is unfairness, about twenty-five employees commented on unfairness. So in summary, uh, we seem to like our supervisors, and supervisors set examples, uh, by working hard, and we like our core colleagues and coworkers, and we like to see colleges improve a little faster pace than, than they like, and we wanna share more information among ourselves, and we like to have more opportunity for faculty and staff development. And people with less than one-year seems to be happiest group among all. That concludes the presentation. If you have any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, so. What is the, uh, plan for follow-up on the, uh, survey? Is the Strategic Committee going to, uh, you know, analyze these results? And we're going through a, quite a series of changes, uh, and frankly, moral becoming. We gotta make sure that we're trending the correct direction. We use this, uh, survey as a barometer.
Yes.
For that, so.
Yes, certainly, this information will be disseminated to all the strategic, uh, planning group, not just for the strategic direction three, which mainly responsible for this, uh, improvement, but the, but all other groups, staff, senate, faculty, senate, college, senate, and this information should be, uh, disputed, and we'll take as much feedback from these results and try to, uh, improve the results next survey.
Sankey, is there a structure for that? I mean, how does that?
Structure.
How's that gonna happen? I mean, how?
Uh, what kind of structure are you?
Yeah, I guess I'm, just wondering how you're gonna take this information. You say all the organization, you hope will take a look at it. Is there just a structure for that? Is there expectations? Are there, who's it gonna be fed back to? I'm just curious what happens to the information finally?
Well, uh, at this point, uh, information dissemination is, is the next step. And then every group, I hope, that discuss the results and, 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 and think about how to, what to do based on this information. Deans Council already met once, and I've presented it to Deans Council. We've talked about a lot of different things about improving information sharing and communication. The communication issue came up three, a- as far as, as far back as I can remember. Every survey comes up with the communication, and we are a little bit perplexed about, no matter what we do, it doesn't seem to be improve, uh, the scores, not at all. And, uh, you know, we've done a lot of different things, like creating Deans Council Newsletter, President Newsletter, uh, we've tried to do everything that we could think of, but still, a lot of people are sharing, uh, expressing the feelings about not being informed. And one of the things that strategic planning is emphasizing is that if And one of the things that strategic planning is emphasizing is that if you feel that you're not part of the group, please join the work groups that strategic planning is doing by participating in committees and work groups. They'll be informed a lot better than just sit back and wait till somebody tell you. So, we are encouraging them to be part of the group and be active about gathering the information so that they don't feel left out, and they don't feel part of the decision-making, and so on. So, that's one of the things that we've been trying hard to be included in every group.
Maria.
Okay. Do you know about approximately how many adjunct teachers we have, and how much time they spend on the campus? They teach a one class, two class?
By design, they are not teaching more than two, six credit hours per semester. And we have about close to 500 adjuncts, I believe.
And out of that 500 adjuncts, how many, about how many participated in that?
Okay. Let me take a look at the number here. They responded about 12%, so 333 in, when we measured a number of adjuncts back in April, was 330 adjuncts. Out of that, only 39, which is 12%, responded.
See, that's, it's a very low.
Response rates.
Response rate. And is it because they don't have regular office hours and all of that extra that the staff really has? Or is it because they just come to teach whatever that subject is and go back on?
That's, I think, one of the reasons why.
Okay. On the staff development, do the adjunct teachers have to attend the staff development? Or just the regular teachers attend it?
Staff, faculty developments are open to all.
I know that, but since they have other jobs, do they participate or not?
They don't participate as much as full-timers.
Okay. And so, can we, do we have to lean on what they say? What I'm saying is, since they're not here that much, and since they got, most of them have other jobs.
Yes.
And work a day shift.
Yeah.
And teach at night.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all they want to do is teach and leave. It's like when the, when the board of regis keeps saying, oh, Flunder, the other day, the guy told me, said, well, you know, your graduation rate is not where it should be in your high schools or the community colleges. And I'm like, they not, they don't come to school to graduate. The ones in high school do, but the ones here do not. A thirty-year-old is not worried about graduation, and a lot of them don't even walk. But, so, okay, is it a way we can compare them separately, then mix them in, because it looks, makes us look like we're not doing a good job because they're pulling us down because there's so many of them that don't answer?
Well, as far as adjunct faculty are concerned, we like to get them involved a little more than just come here and teach and leave, because a lot of our classes are taught by adjuncts.
I know.
And the treating them so that they can feel part of the family here, I think it makes them more passionate about teaching classes here.
Then we're going to have to have staff development for those persons in the evening, and have a two, three evenings till we can get everything in.
Yes.
We have to do something different then, because every year is the same. So, and it's getting larger because it's a larger amount. If it's 500 of them, it's more than them than anybody else that work on this campus. So, that means that we've got to do the staff development in the evening.
Yes.
And not in the daytime.
Yes.
Okay.
We've got to think up about something, we've got to do something about how we're going to give them the opportunity for development.
Right. We're going to take what they say.
Yes.
And they're the smallest group, and they're the largest group that participates. We've got to get them involved. So, I say, have the staff development meetings on Saturday and in the evenings, and make it mandatory that they come. I don't know how you do that, but that's my suggestion.
Yes.
So, yeah, I hate to push this a little further, but it seems to me like something different or additional needs to happen here. You mentioned that the various groups are going to meet and talk about this. It seemed like it needs to go to a deeper level, and I may just comment to administration that it needs to go back to strategic, strategic planning needs to look at, how does it fit strategic plan, how does strategic plan group respond to it? I guess I'd just look for a little deeper dive into the information and see what we get. And one of the, one of the areas for improvement was opportunities for staff and faculty development. Where'd that come from? Because I don't remember anything. We went through it pretty quickly, but I don't remember anything in the survey that respond or asked about staff and faculty development. I just missed that?
Um.
I think it's really important.
One of the bottom.
Be keys of information, I just.
Yes. The bottom five, average scores.
Okay.
That question is one of them.
That was one of them?
One of them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just missed it then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Men.
Thank you.
That completes my report.
You entertain a motion to accept the president's report? Tell him move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Vice President for Academic Affairs Report.
Okay. You'll find my report on page 20 of the Board Agenda, and I believe we're going to start with Dr. Walker. Do you have your group here? Dr. Walker's going to introduce a couple of her faculty, and I think a student here. These were individuals involved with the Scenic Group publication that we shared with you last September's board meeting, and I, hopefully, will have some additional copies to share with you today.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vitale. The young woman at the, at the table going around is Tasha Haas. She's our creative writing instructor. You may recall Ms. Haas' work a couple of years ago, I believe it. Was it your first edition of Scenic Group, Tasha, or was it your second edition?
This is the fourth edition.
We are now in the fourth edition, right, but just in the first or second year of publication, we received an award from the Community College Humanities Association, second year. And it's a very interesting piece of literature or collection of literature and fine arts that Tasha puts together. She solicits submissions from area high schools and from our own college students, and artworks as well, and just does a marvelous job. So, please, this is Tasha Haas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm pretty proud of this. It's a lot of work, but it, it's rewarding work because the students who are published in here, I have to tell you, they are thrilled. For most of them, it's their first time seeing their names in print, and they have told me over and over what it means to them as beginning writers, you know, as young writers, you need that support. So, this is, this is important to these writers, these artists who are here on campus and in high schools as well. You can read some about each of the students at the very back. There are biographies of the people who are in here, artists and author biographies. And in particular, I want to point out a couple of students today, but one is Shane Morioka, and his biography is in here. He was the award winner for the Creative Writing Scholarship, the first scholarship given in honor of Phil Miller last year. So, Shane is a writer from Hawaii. He's a young man who writes beautiful poems about the ocean and surfing and mountains, and you can see one of his poems on page two called Surf. So, he was given, as I said, the first ever Creative Writing Scholarship. It's a $500 award that's given by the Phil Miller family. Some of you will remember Phil, I imagine, in his honor. And so, today also, we're really pleased to have this award. It encourages creative writers here on campus, and not only encouraging them, you know, just by verbal support, but by money, you know, giving a gift for their education that way. And today, we have this year's award winner with us, and this is a very special student as well. I'd like to introduce Victoria Patrick. Come on up, Victoria. Victoria's a fantastic writer as well, and she's a great student. She's committed. I've had her in four semesters now. I've had her as a children's literature student in composition classes, and now in creative writing, and she continues to impress me with her writing. And I'll let her, I'll let you ask her or her tell you a little bit about her writing goals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have any questions, or?
Yeah, where's your daddy work?
The Wyandotte County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, he does, doesn't he? And, and by the way, quite, quite the own creative writer, quite the creative writer in his own right, so she comes by it pretty naturally. Ms. Patrick.
I am not published, no.
She is not published in this one. She's the award winner. So, tell us about your writing for the award.
I write, well, like, what do I write?
Yeah.
I write poetry, I write fiction, short stories. I like to write children's stories. I'd like to publish books for children. I was homeschooled growing up, and there just aren't a lot of books out for homeschooled children or about homeschooled children, and I would like to fill that gap and write about them, write for them.
Okay, any more questions?
Curious what the $500 can be used for.
It goes for tuition and books.
Tuition and books, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Have any, Dr. Walker, do you have anything else?
No, just many thanks to the Endowment Association for this award. It's only two years old. And many thanks to, the reason you don't see Victoria in this year is, this book was actually a collection of works from.
Last year.
Last year.
She'll be in next year.
I suspect you'll see her in the, in the spring when it comes around again, but we do appreciate your support of this project. It fills a much-needed gap in the, in the area.
I would also like to recognize Professor Brian Whitehead, journalism professor. He designed it, and I think it's beautiful, and it just keeps getting more beautiful, the art and the writing keep improving, but Brian did a great job.
Are any of the works in the book for sale or have been sold?
I don't know. You would have to, I guess, contact the artist.
Yeah, I know there's one in, in Dr. Gibbons' office. I saw that yesterday when I was here. So, yeah, I'll, I'll stay in touch and see what, if there's anything available for sale.
Perhaps Janet Manson's work you're thinking of. I know she's in here, and she has a lot of paintings on canvas.
Right.
And in the bookstore.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Can I have a question?
Another question.
Yeah, just curious how you distribute it, and how do, how can people get copies of it?
Well, the print shop prints it for us, which is generous, supportive of them, but, so we can only print 75 copies, so editions are limited, or that's our budget for right now, anyway. When it comes out, we have a reading to release it, which we had in September in the Intercultural Center, and we had as many writers and artists who are in it come and present, and so we pass them out that way. They're at the library, just the writers who are in here and the artists all get a copy. So, by the time we give them out to the English department, they're, that's about it.
I'm sorry, when is that event?
We had it in September this year.
Dean Walker, in the future, I think it would be appropriate, okay, and we're talking about the communication, and one of our mechanisms is, of course, the having taped board meetings to better inform people. If, not a lot of time, maybe just one of the students read their poetry or story or something so that people get a flavor of what is in, available. And then also, I think, having this not only in the intercultural center, maybe even in our library for checkout.
We do archive.
You know, that's something I think that is, is important.
Yeah, it's in the intercultural center and the library.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks for that, though.
Yeah, yeah. But, because I think that we display our talent that the students have, I think that can go a long way in letting people know the good work that our departments are doing for students.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Trustee.
And along with that line, if possible, put on a website.
Yeah, past issues have been on there, the entire magazine. We haven't gotten this one up yet.
Okay.
It's a new website, in transition. But, yeah. And that way, community members could go on there and read it, and District 500 high school students can submit.
Great. Okay. Well, again, thank you.
Dr. Walker, wasn't one person prepared to do a reading this morning?
I had, I had asked Victoria if she were prepared, but I don't know that.
I have a piece that I'm not sure if I'm prepared, I could be.
Would you please? Thank you.
It's a big step to do your first reading in public in front of the board of trustees. Yeah, we're so scared.
She can do it. She can do it.
I have two pieces this morning. The first one is Nature Nurture. I am poetry and the fresh scent of flowers and the unwavering strength of trees. I am a canvas splashed with color and torn-out pages of stories and truths and myth. I am filled with stardust, and I glow like the moon, and I keep my secrets deep like My second piece is something that I worked on in class this semester, and it actually isn't in its final stages of revision yet, but it's called Smile, Sweetie. This mouth is not for you to kiss. You do not get to choose what comes out of it. No, my lips are for chapstick, and this tongue is for reciting classic poetry in between classes. I do not exist to please. My lips will not tug back for you, my dimples will not show, you will not see the whites of my teeth. My legs will not part for you, my body not yours to undress. The length of my shorts is not permission. Do not ever call me a tease. I do not exist to please.
Next. Congratulations. Well done, well done.
We appreciate your sharing your work.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Michael?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Walker, Tasha, and Victoria. Appreciate that. Next, we're going to have John Long's, one of his direct reports, do a report for you. John, you want to go ahead and introduce Sean? John is the dean of Student Services, and I've got a presentation for you.
Members of the board and, okay, members of the board and the audience, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Sean Derrick, who is our director of the Student Advising Center, to talk a little bit about mandatory advising that starts up on November 1st.
See, I'm a little vertically challenged. Good morning.
Good morning.
As a graduate of Kansas City, Kansas Community College, a '91 graduate in 1991, and also graduate of Schlegel High School in '88, it is an honor to have been able to serve this campus as a counselor, and now as the director of the Student Advising Center. I'm a product of this community, and I'm one of the many great success stories of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. It's an honor to be here before you. Before I begin my report, I'd like for the staff and faculty of the Student Advising Center to stand and be recognized for the great work that they do in academic advising for our campus and students. If you'll stand, please. If you'll excuse them, they are going to be heading back to the office today. It's the first day of classes for midterm, and so, we want to make sure that we are able to serve our students, but I asked them to come this morning just so that you could see. But I asked them to come this morning, just so that you could see who's doing advising, some of the advising. Granted, we don't want to, to ignore the faculty advisors that serve our students as well, but I wanted to recognize them. According to the American College Testing Association, academic advising is a developmental process which assists students in the clarification of their life goals and in the development of educational plans for the realization of these goals. The advisor serves as a facilitator of communication, a coordinator of learning experiences through course and career planning, and academic progress review, and an agent of referral to other campus agencies as necessary. Some time ago, we were using the term intrusive advising, and I know for, for some of you and even some of the other administrators here on campuses, it was a very intrusive word and was very uncomfortable. Currently, the literature now actually classifies that as proactive advising, which was formerly known as intrusive advising.
That's positive.
Yeah, that's, I, I figured you would enjoy that term better than intrusive advising. But the, the literature now says it's actually considered proactive advising, and it's defined by the work of Robert Glennon. Glennon took developmental advising theory one step further to help advisors reach out to students. Programs utilizing proactive academic advising build structures that incorporate intervention strategies, mandating advising contact for students who otherwise might not seek advising. This is coming from the NACADA National Academic Advising Association. Tinto, who is also a well-known author and researcher in higher education, indicates that effective retention programs have to understand that academic advising is the very core of successful institutional efforts to educate and retain students. For this reason, academic advising, as described by Wes Habli, should be viewed as the hub of the will and not just one of the various isolated services provided for students. Academic advisors provide students with the needed connection to the various campus services and supply the essential academic connection between these services and the students. In addition, academic advisors offer students the personal connection to the institution that the research indicates is vital to student retention and student success. And again, that's coming from the National Academic Advising Association, NACADA. Mandatory advising was first mentioned on our campus between the years of 2006 and 2008, when we had a Title III grant here on our campus. They did a pilot study, and in that pilot study, they found that students that were required to see an advisor were more likely to be retained for the next semester. The literature also supports that. Mandatory advising was then made as a part of our strategic, our current strategic plan. So therefore, November, on November 1st, mandatory advising will become a part of Kansas City, Kansas advising process. All students under 30 credit hours who are degree-seeking, which, coming from the Institutional Research Office, I contacted Chris Day, and I found out that we have about 3,400 students who fit that population. So they will be required to see an academic advisor or a program coordinator prior to enrolling every semester while they're under 30 credit hours. So people that are, students that are, that are completing Associate in Applied Science or Associate in Journal Study, Career Program will be seen by program coordinators, and the students that are completing Associate in Science, Associate in Art, or who are undecided, or developmental students will be seen by advisors in the Student Advising Center. Online students will be enrolled by our online advisor. Once e-advising is up, which is one of the products of Data Tell, that will assist in the process of advising students who are online. What are some of the outcomes that we're hoping and the literature supports, actually, from mandatory advising? The literature says that we can expect to have greater retention of all students, particularly minority students, and if you're reading the current literature, our minority males, which graduate at such a lower rate than any other student on our campus, and this is nationwide. We also can expect to see a higher percentage of graduation, understanding that some of our students don't come here to graduate, and we realize that, but those that do, that manage, that don't graduate because of a lack of connection or a lack of advising, we're expecting, and the literature supports, we can expect to see more graduation and transferability for students transferring to a four-year college. We can also expect to see a decrease in financial rate exclusion appeals, a decrease in students reaching their max of financial aid without degree completion. Now, you may be asking me, what's gonna happen during those 30 credit hours while we're advising? In the Student Advising Center, we see advising as teaching. So therefore, we expect to have outcomes, and there's things that we will be doing in our office, in addition to just, not just, but in addition to helping students select courses, there are things that we want to help students understand so that they can also navigate a college campus when they transfer. So there are various workshops that we already have in place and that we will be creating more that will address some of the things that students should understand on a college campus that will help them to be successful here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and any other school that they transfer to. So we'll have workshops such as understanding how to use the web, web advisor, FOCUS, which is focusing on careers, understanding success. We currently have a transfer workshop and college fair, so students can get information on how to transfer to a four-year college and what they need to understand. And we'll also be work, doing workshops in collaboration with Enrollment Management on how to use Degree Audit. So that's what's gonna be happening with mandatory advising on our campus. That's the end of my report. Are there any questions that you may have for me?
Show them your shirt, Sean.
I was just, that was-
I wanted to know that, Sean, is it?
That was the important question I had. What is your shirt?
Love it.
You probably are seniors around campus, on wires. We wanted to make sure that all students were aware that this was happening. We don't want them to be surprised when they attempt to enroll themselves online. I've already ran into some students that have questioned, had questions about that. We understand that initially, this is gonna be a shock for some students. We understand that anytime there's change, there's gonna be adjustment, and, and my staff is very much aware that we will be working even harder. They work very hard now because our workload is going to increase, but we think this is what's best for students, and we're here to serve students. And I tell the staff in my office that our students are our customers, and we are, we're here to serve them, and, and everything that we do should be done with them in consideration. And this is a best practice, literature supports it, and we wanna see more of our students continue to be success stories and be great products of our community and this campus.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned there are 3,400 students that fit that category. That was a fairly small group of people that stood up there.
Well, some, we have a few that weren't here, that weren't able to make it. But keep in mind, of that 3,400, that's also including our students that are pursuing Associate in Applied Science degrees. So they will be seen by the coordinators of those programs. We'll be meeting with those coordinators, and information has been put out campus-wide, but we will be meeting. The Assistant Director, Tammy Miller, will be meeting with the coordinators just to help them with that process and understand how we can assist them. But, but not all those students are going to be coming to our office. However, if I was to bring you some reports of past, past years, we have handled quite a bit of traffic in our office, and we have very capable advisors that are advising students. It's not a, it's not a revolving will, we're not just getting them in, get them out, we're spending quality time with them. But again, I, I think during this first semester, it's gonna be adjustment. Some of the things that we are discussing and will be talking with Enrollment Management and also with, with Institutional Research is looking at the dates that we're enrolling. Currently, we start enrolling students for the next semester, November 1st. We would like to look at possibly expanding that and starting enrollment possibly in October. There are many times that we have students that come to our office that we have to turn away because we're not able to enroll them until November 1st, even though the, the schedule's up. We realize, though, working with other offices, there are things that we may not be aware of as to why we haven't started, but we're going to be having those conversations with other offices here on campus and look at if there's a possibility of extending our enrollment period so that we can stretch that time period and also make sure that we're not turning students away.
Maria?
Yes, I wanna thank you because out of heaven having one student that fell through the cracks, so that's remarkable.
Awesome.
And on those special ed students, how, do you have, do everybody counsel them that's in your office?
Students that have IEPs?
Yes.
Alex Twitty actually works with us in assisting and advising those students. We do get students in our office that, that have that, but of course, legally, we cannot ask a student if they have an IP. But if they, if they inform us that they have an IP, we, we assist them, but we also refer them to Alex Twitty, who is our Learning Specialist in Academic, in the Academic Resource Center, to assist them.
The student has to tell you.
Yes, ma'am, they have to disclose that. Legally, we cannot ask a student if they have an IP. We can ask questions that would say, have you gotten, did you get extra help in school? Did you get a little bit more time when you were in high school to complete a test? But we cannot, we cannot, you know, to put it as the kids would say, we can't put them on Front Street. They have to disclose that themselves.
So they can go through both years here-
Yes, ma'am.
And you never know.
Yes, ma'am. But again, as a part of the proactive advising, we can ask those questions. We can let, you know, when students are, when we're looking at their transcript, their transcript is basically a, a blueprint of their academic performance, and the advisors in our office, they recognize when we see inconsistencies or when we see where students are struggling in a certain area, there's other type of proactive questions that we would ask.
Okay, but then, if they're not struggling, then you won't pick that up?
Well, if they're not struggling, then they're doing pretty well, and maybe their IEP is no longer an issue.
He did real well, but he wanted to walk and he wanted to have a diploma from here before he went to the University of Kansas. He's doing real good.
Awesome.
But, okay, I never knew that, I, I guess I should've, when I brought him in here, I should've said so.
Yeah.
But I, I will from now. But that's, you know, 'cause then I, I'm not just gonna probably up and tell you, and I, I don't like that method, but I know y'all got too many things going on with that, you know?
There are some students that just don't wanna disclose that because they don't wanna be treated-
Really, they're not gonna tell you.
They don't wanna be treated differently. I have two kids of my own that have IEPs that are in, in the school system, and, and just watching how they adjust to the reality that, that they're pulled out of class sometimes and they're not in their regular class with the other students, that sometimes it can cause a complex. And so some students, when they get to college, they don't wanna experience that anymore. But we have had students that, when they finally disclose that, we helped them understand that everybody learns differently, and there's nothing wrong with having an IP. It is there to assist you in the way that you learn, you know? But until they get over that, that fear and that, that stigma, they usually won't disclose that.
Are there any more questions, Sean?
I'd just like to thank Sean, and appreciate that. And also, Dr. Brenda Walker, who's, Kelly, I'm sorry, who's the Director of our Developmental Education Program, has worked hand-in-hand with Sean and myself and others as we've coordinated this activity with our IT folks in terms of illusion, what it would take. And we were very concerned that Sean and the staff would be able to handle the increased workload. They've assured us along the way that they could. And so I wanna appreciate that, and thank you, Dr. Kelly, for your help in, in seeing this to fruition. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And kind of related to the, you know, the discussion about the IEPs and, and not being able to do that, you saw down in my report where Dr. Michael Burns had, had reported the number of ADA accommodations had increased quite a bit, almost doubled, from last year to this year. And one of the things that, that we think may be contributing to that is the fact that, that these students are finding that when they go in and they, they identify that they have an ADA accommodation, whether it's extended test-taking time, whether it's taking a test in a quiet, controlled environment, need of note takers, et cetera, that our Academic Resource Center is very responsive to these students and their needs. And we think what may be happening is the students are, are finding that they're being able to be successful when they go in and they get these, these accommodations, and so they're, they're sharing their experiences with other students, and so by word of mouth, we're getting more students who are, are coming forward and, and recognizing, you know, that they have those, those needs. And what I've, I've learned here in Kansas, which is really positive, is when these students have the IEP from the K-12 system and they transition to college, they don't have to go back and be retested to certify that they still have a need for accommodations. They can bring forward their IEP from the K-12 system, and it, it is still valid. Where I came from, that wasn't the case. If a student had a, a documented disability in, in the K-12 system, when they transitioned to college, they had to go back and be retested to have that same ADA accommodation apply. So it was very expensive, and if an institution couldn't afford to help those costs, a lot of the students just didn't, never got retested, even though they knew, you know, from the time they graduated high school in May to starting college in August, you know, they did not all of a sudden change that dramatically, so it's good to know. So that is partially why, and, and, you know, we do have to be sensitive to those, those privacy acts in terms of whether or not we ask or, or not. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has regarding my report.
You have one more.
GM internship?
Oh, that's right, the internship with GM. Yeah, there's really nobody here to report on that. When we started following up, what we learned with the internship on, the GM is, we sent a couple of students out to interview for the internships, and we never received any callbacks from that. We never, none of the students ever heard back from GM regarding the internship, and we are still in the process of trying to find out, you know, what happened, if it was, you know, if they, you know, they didn't find out, they didn't hear anything. They didn't say that they weren't selected, they didn't, they just never responded back to the students. So we're, we're still pursuing that with Brian Patrick and Marissa Gray are still looking into those issues, but they, they hadn't found anything out before today, so.
That's disappointing.
Other than that they didn't get the calls. But we sent some students that we thought were, were really good, well-qualified for the, the purpose of the internship, so we'll still, we'll still pursue it.
It's disappointing if they didn't respond.
I just have a question on, on, I think this is under your report on page 32 on the grants.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
I see two under the Walmart community grants of different amounts for the Women's Resource Center. What are those, what are the different, I mean, what are, what are the two grants that were submitted? Obviously, they're different grants for different amounts.
Uh, I'm not sure. And that may be, that may be a, an error. It may be that I entered, we may have thought that one, and I may have, 'cause I'll sometimes adjust this with things that I know have been submitted that maybe haven't hit Melinda's desk, and it's very possible that the first entry is an older entry and the second one is a more up-to-date revision of what was actually asked for in terms of the grant. I don't think there were two duplicates. I think it was just one. But I'll, it'll be clarified next month.
I have a few questions that I gave you a heads up on. On page four of your report, the FOCUS program-
Mm-hmm.
Was interested in a little more detail, and then what, it doesn't articulate what students were talking about, if those were like high school students or recruiting effort, or if it was our current students in the FOCUS program.
Well, I believe it's, it's both of those groups. It's not only our, our current students that we advertise to, but we also bring it forward at, at community events and recruiting events, so students are aware of it, so that it, they know that it's an option to them. And so we don't exclude, it's not exclusively for just our students, and it's not exclusively for recruiting students. It's, it's something that we make sure that the students and the community are aware of, that we have this option available for them.
Okay. And the, page five on the Adult Ed Program, talked about enrollment, and there seemed to be a focus to just to the western part of our county. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Well, yes, you're right, and so what I did was I reached out to Rosemary Lishka, who runs that program, and asked her for a little history and, and so forth, and she explained that up until 2007, we had a space at 630 Minnesota where we were doing Adult Ed, but it turns out that, as she says, the wiring in the building couldn't support a computer lab, so they moved out at that time. They, they found that a lot of the students who lived at this, in that area, even when the center was open, were still coming to the main campus. There's something about coming to the college campus that attracts students, and, but she is very open to looking for another site in the eastern part of the city. So it's something we can take a look at and see if we can do that, but, you know, we're not, we just don't have a site down there at this point in time.
They think about the main branch, Public Library, 625 Minnesota, and talk to you about that later. On the data for- On the data for college fairs and high school visits, it did not give a number of faculty and staff that participate?
So far, we've had two.
Two.
Two, yes.
All right. And then on enrollment report, do we have stats on our minority enrollment and what the trend is?
I do. Sonky Men was able to provide that to me either last night or early this morning. I saw it early this morning when I came in. And he gave me a breakdown on it. Essentially, what we're seeing is we're seeing a, from 2011, '12, '13 to '14, we're seeing a slight decrease in African male, African Americans, an increase in Hispanics. In fact, the number of, the percentage of Hispanics has almost doubled from 2011 fall to the current semester, which is a trend that we've been trying to increase. White enrollment has slightly decreased as well from 50 to 48 percent. So that's kind of that. So we do that. And if you'd like, we can include that in the board report.
Yes.
It won't change from month to month, but it'll be pretty much a summary. Maybe what we can do is do maybe next year and start looking at October, November, a overall summary of how our enrollment compared in terms of ethnic and et cetera.
Yes, that would be great. And then my last question is on page 13 of your report, we were unsuccessful in our second Department of Labor grant. And I was wondering, are there any common causes or are we, how are we following up on, I'm hoping we would go for a third and third time's a charm.
We, right now, the Neosho Community College was the lead on that consortium. And they are still waiting. They don't expect to hear any feedback on details as to what they liked, what they didn't like about the grant proposal until November. So we'll, once they receive that information, they will share it with the rest of the consortium. And we'll know from that point what it was that made ours less competitive than the one for the, one consortium grant in Kansas was awarded. And I think it was a much bigger, I think it was in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 million dollar proposal.
Because if I'm correct, this was our second effort. I think K-State was our first.
Right, yeah.
And then what I'd be interested in for the board, again, is from the feedback on the first one and the feedback with the second, what are the commonality in regards to our part of it? Obviously, we can't control the rest, but that, so that maybe, again, through either our strategic planning or through board policy, we can strengthen ourselves to be able to get these very important grants and for our programs. I think that that's something that we need to get a little more information on and that. So if we could have that, maybe, that would probably be the December board meeting, if you're not going to get it until November.
Most likely, because depending on when it comes out, in November.
Okay, all right. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Vied, I have a couple of places that I would like you to look at that's downtown.
Okay.
I had just another question that if we, and this is for future time to get some information. When we talked about the increase in the Hispanic students, which is great. Are there, have there been any issues in terms of any of the departments with the DACA students? I know they're, you know, they're, right now, we're getting, we're doing renewals and all that. And I didn't know if there are any, every once in a while, I hear that there are challenges in different departments with the DACA students. And I just, if there's a way of looking at that.
Can you explain? I don't really know what a DACA student is, so.
It's a deferred action. I'm sorry. It's a deferred action for young people who have come to this country before the age of 16. And, you know, there's some requirements for that. But they do receive this deferred action and are, you know, of course eligible to pursue the education. And I know we have DACA students here. I'm just not, I just at some point would like to know if there are any barriers or struggles to.
Shirley, can you speak to that?
I think there's some major ones in the professional careers because they have to have social security numbers and background checks, and they can't be licensed if they don't have those things. And there's some difficulty in getting them.
No, okay, because I think maybe that's what I was hearing, maybe in the nursing department, okay.
Any more questions? I entertain a motion to accept the vice president's report. Go move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the vice president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the payment of bills.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also request a motion for, to accept the financial reports.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded to accept the financial reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's a question.
Is this where the information on the, the penalty that we received, does that?
I think we got that.
Can I bring that up?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
I don't think we got it.
Okay, okay.
That's under recommendations, isn't it?
No, it's under the report.
The waiver.
The business office report.
Oh, it's business, oh, okay. Would you give us the page number, please?
Thirty-four.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, what's your question? Am I?
The fifth bullet down is what she's talking about, I think.
One, two, three, four. Yeah, the fifth bullet, it says that we received a penalty for 2012 from IRS regarding come on that.
Right, I asked you about that in committee. Go ahead and answer.
We did receive a notice of a penalty. This is not the first time. We had one last year also, which was much larger than this one. And the community college group have drafted a letter that we send to IRS and ask for a waiver of that. Last year, we asked for a waiver, we received a waiver, and we feel quite confident we'll get a waiver again this year. We've made tremendous improvement. It's very difficult sometimes to get the tax ID numbers for everyone that's on campus. And if a student doesn't ask for financial aid, it becomes even more difficult. But we do think we'll be relieved of that penalty.
Okay, so this is just regarding the students that don't receive financial aid?
Well, no, not necessarily, no. It's students that we don't have a social security number for.
How do you enroll without a social security number?
I would have to maybe have someone else answer that question.
I don't know, but I think those DACA students are able to enroll without social security numbers, because that's what happens with the.
I mean, I think that's where there's a gap.
With the health mail, there is a gap.
Yes.
They're given a different number.
Yep.
International, I don't think have social security numbers.
So we're going to be late every year and pay a penalty?
No.
If you like, trustee Funder, I could give you a summary of what the law requires you to have on enrollment, and it might help you, it might better explain how those things occur.
But I want to be clear, while the IRS is obviously following their regulations, this is a system-wide issue. And so all of the institutions have gotten together and have made, I would, a form letter so that we all say the same things across our community college system and request the waiver. And past pattern in practice has been that the IRS has granted the waiver.
And that's because trustee Rios, the community colleges are trying to comply with what the law requires and what the situations often present. And all of the community colleges are experiencing similar difficulties. And my understanding is that what is happening is that the IRS is working with post-secondary education to help you all resolve the issue. I'm not sure how successful the efforts of the parties have been, but it isn't just this community college that experiences that. It's every community college that tries to obey the law, to be tolerant of the challenges of your enrolled students or like to be enrolled students and the demands of the IRS. My understanding is that there is some suggested remedy for what you call the system, but I'll just call post-secondary institutions in the state of Kansas. But there's more to it than what we're doing now in terms of the summary discussion, although the summary discussion is accurate.
And I do believe there has been due diligence, as reported to finance committee, on the efforts of staff to lessen. You know, I don't know that until there is some remedy, you're going to have some. But I think for the trustees, I would hope that just knowing that we are dissipating the issue, we do address the issue and in fact receive the waiver are good things. But again, we do want to be sure that we are accurately reporting to you exactly what is going on within the financial side of the house.
And if they don't accept it, we have to pay this penalty?
We would have to pay a penalty if they don't accept the waiver. But I would think that then that would mean that the other community colleges would be facing that same issue. It wouldn't just be NC Kansas Community College.
And my answer would be perhaps.
I understand that, but I'm like, this happened last year.
Well, it's happened really more than last year.
We need to see, we can work on it so it won't happen for the next year. Because if it's going to be that every year, it makes us take another look. Or you got to put that much in, more in the budget for it, because you know you're going to spend it with them. That's okay, that's okay.
I'm not sure how to further explain it.
But we can probably come up with some best practices going forward. And, because what happened here was somewhat proactive. But perhaps, Dr. Givens, I can work with the committee and share what I know some of the other community colleges are facing and see what the lawyers who represent them are recommending. Although I think it'll be a similar answer, but it's helpful to at least double check. And I'll report back to the finance committee.
Dr. Wendell, is that, is this something that, in terms of, it's a little related, but in terms of the DACA students, because so many of them want to go into the healthcare field and there's such a need, is there some discussions among the colleges about ways to come up with a solution on the needed documentation for certificate programs? Or is it just a barrier that can't be crossed?
Well, it's really about the community colleges, the National Council of State Boards of Nursing, saying you have to have these kinds of criteria. And it's sad that they can go through the educational program and then not get licensed because of this legal doctrine of their status. I mean, it's kind of like Kansas law maybe is ahead of the overall law, I mean, the federal law is the way I almost interpret it, because we say they can go to school as a resident, but I think the federal law is saying maybe that's not so.
Okay, I thought they could go to K through 12 if their parents moved here and they were illegal.
Well, they could go to, yeah, they can do post-secondary. You're talking about DACA?
But I thought they had to pay for it. Can they receive federal money?
Well, they do have to pay. This is a little separate issue about, you know, the gap in those DACA students that want to become certified and pursue, for example, nursing certification and are having a problem with that. And I just wondered if that's across the board, if there's a way of, if anyone's trying to deal with that at the higher level. I'm just curious. I mean, I realize it's beyond, you know, the colleges, and I don't know if they're all responding in the same way because of this higher level decision. But I don't want to belabor it, but it'd be, I think it's worth really looking at a way of advocating for that change, because we're reaching out to Hispanic students where there's a need for them to be educated, for them to be in the nursing and health fields, definitely. So I don't know. I just, something for the future that if we can really find a way to advocate for that.
And if I remember some of them, I think even KU is dealing with this with their other programs too.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure, yeah.
It is a major issue when they have the potential to.
Yeah, okay, I'm, yeah, I'm just, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like a motion to approve the recommendations.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion to approve the recommendations, C. 1 through 7. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
About the piano?
Yes.
Can we offer that? We just throw it away or do?
I don't think it has.
Actually, we found an organization, Susan gave me the name of an organization, will come in and pick it up and they refurbish it and they put it into a place where they can use it.
Now, there is a charitable organization that does that.
Keys for Kids, I believe the name of it was.
I think that's it.
Keys for Kids.
Yes, exactly.
We will notify them.
We asked about that in finance.
Great.
Okay, first, ask general counsel, how much time do we need for executive session?
Forty minutes.
Okay, need a motion to enter executive session.
We got to approve this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we vote to approve the recommendations?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Okay, throwing me off. That's what she's asking. I need a motion to enter into executive session for 40 minutes to discuss non-elected personnel matters, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and for consultation on matters protected by the attorney-client privilege.
With possible action to follow, Mr. Chairman.
With possible action to follow.
And a five-minute transition period.
So move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to enter into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have a five-minute break and enter into exec session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we come back into session.
Move that, do I get a second? Okay, move a second to bring us back in order. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Director of Human Resources.
Oh, we got human resources.
Oh, yeah, we ain't done. Are there any highlights on your report that you want to make us aware of?
No, they're not.
Good. I think I'm more than we accepted.
Thank you.
I have a motion to accept the Director of Human Resources' report. Do I have a second?
I'll second it with, I think there is a mention of Dr. Shirley Wendell retiring. There's been a rumor about that around for a while and want to congratulate you on retirement and thank you for the great work you've done here at this college.
It's been recommended by the president that we don't approve it.
I'll take her off the list. You making that amendment?
Consider that a friendly amendment. That's a friendly amendment.
We will miss her. She does such a perfect job with the accreditation for all of her areas. I mean, they're all stellar, no recommendations. I mean, she's awesome. But she has volunteered to come back and assist us with accreditation of whatever we need after she has the month of February in Florida.
All right, sounds good.
I do have one question, in item number 18 on your list.
Okay.
Is that a correct name?
Yes.
Okay.
I've asked twice. I've asked twice.
Okay, all right, then, does he go by Captain or John?
Oh, yeah, we laughed about that.
He goes by Captain.
He goes by Captain, okay. All right, thank you. All right, I have a motion to approve the Director of Human Resources' report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What we got next? Thank you. A report from committees, any committee report?
All I, I appreciate if any trustee has feedback on the new forms of the financial. We certainly would welcome that. We're, you know, continuing to refine, to make sure that the information that the board receives is pretty much the same information the committee receives. That wasn't necessarily the case previous, but we wanted to put it into a form that kind of simplifies all the, obviously, the committee work that goes on. So if anyone has a need for additional information, or I know Dr. Givens has talked about actually having some graphs to accompany some of the information, that's certainly very workable. And we'll, we want to make sure that you have an understanding of the information that's presented. So anything that you have, just let me know and then I'll work with our new interim CFO to see that that happens.
Thank you, trustee.
I thought it was a really big improvement.
Yeah, I do too.
Very good.
Any other trustees had an opportunity to review the new format for the expense, for the finance reports? Have any comments?
Some more detail.
Okay. All right, moving along, unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moving to second, we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Move.